Hey. Wanting to break? No, I don't.
Yeah, you sure?
Moore?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Greckin?
Here.
Please join me in a moment of silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some interviews for city council, appointed boards, commissions, and committees. The Active Transportation Advisory Committee, Liliana Madrid. Liliana here?
Yeah.
Do you want to please come up to the podium and state your name and address and tell me if I pronounced your name correctly, please?
You said it perfectly. Liliana Madrid. The address is 2016 Heights Avenue. I just moved there, so I'm just learning the address. Yeah.
Want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
I just moved here from California. So, I just recently bought this house, and I'm about a year in. So, I'm a recent Sioux Cityian. Yeah. And I work at Sioux City Community School District, and I do all their enrollments there.
Okay, very good.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Um, the only question I had was, uh, if Lily and maybe Lisa, you could help me out as well. I don't know the protocol. I know you said that the dates that they normally meet might not work in your schedule. Is that right?
Yeah, so I also have a second job. I work at Jackson Street Brewery, um, and I usually work on Tuesdays, which is the time and date that you guys have that committee going on, so that's the only problem.
My question was, and I don't remember from when I served on the committee, do they ever revisit that of when they meet or talk about that?
Well, if Erin Brizina was here, she might be able to speak on it, but it's such a new committee.
I was gonna say, I didn't know. Yeah. Okay.
Cause that's, I mean, the only day is Tuesday is usually when I can't meet during the week, but usually after 3:45 is when I'm out of my other jobs, so I should be able to get anywhere after that.
And that's what I thought since the committee was so new.
Right. Right. If appointed, you could discuss it with Erin ahead of time and see what else the group could do.
We'll just have to work through that.
Okay.
And if you get appointed and stuff, it goes well, then we'll just, hopefully Erin will be able to be a little flexible, or we can see. I don't even know if they've had a first meeting yet, right? Do we know?
I think.
They haven't?
It.
Jeff doesn't think that they have.
Oh, he would know.
Okay. Yeah, maybe that's negotiable.
Hey, thank you for applying.
Thank you. Thank you.
Civil Service Commission, Lisa Bertrand. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa.
Reapplying, way to go.
I know.
For punishment.
Definitely.
Have your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. My name is Lisa Bertrand. My address is 3644 Cheyenne Boulevard, Sioux City, Iowa.
Anything you want the council members to know?
Um, I am applying for my second term on the Civil Service Commission, and, um, nothing else has really changed. I, um, continue to be employed at Tyson Foods as an attorney and do general corporate legal work, and I am on the board for United Way.
I will share with the council that, as you know, I sit on or attend the Civil Service Commission meetings, and I've been doing that for the length of time that Lisa's been there. And I would tell you that she has the experience, uh, she has the knowledge, she contributes to the meetings, always has some good questions to ask, and, uh, I think she'd be, uh, great. Uh, and thank you for wanting to go through it again for another four years, because this group in particular, of all the meetings at least that I go to, they're active, and there's a lot going on, and they participate outside of the meetings, so, uh, I know I've been impressed with Lisa's contribution to the committee, and I think she'd be great for the committee.
Thanks, Pete. Thank you for reapplying.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Museum Board and Trustees, Dave Samsky. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I am Dave Samsky. Um, I've been here a little bit longer than a year, like, for 70 years. And I'm applying, uh, 4518 Fourth Avenue, and am anxious to serve on the museum board.
And this is your first?
This is my first, on this board.
Yes.
It's my first time, and I don't think I've served on any of the city boards. I've been active with the museum and...
I was gonna say, I'm surprised you haven't. You're pretty active in the community, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No, I, again, another quick comment. I'm, I'm pretty sure, uh, the museum director would be pretty happy, because the comment you made in your questionnaire, "A city is richer with a museum," I know he agrees with, and I do too, and...
Yes.
And, and simply thank you for your willingness to get involved.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our consent agenda. Items three through 13D constitute a consent agenda. Items passed unanimously, unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. Any person wishing to speak on an agenda item may come to the podium at the time the item is being discussed. Any person wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at the end of the regular meeting during citizen concerns. Please fill out a citizen concern card found outside the chamber's entrance and give it to the city manager to my far left. All speakers shall state their name and address for the record and then provide their statement. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Item three, reading of the city council minutes of March 11, 2019. Item four, resolution accepting a lead-based paint hazard reduction grant from HUD. I have a comment on that. It's Jill here. Hi, Jill. I just want to say, great job and congratulations. I read your write-up for the council, and it stated that a total of 48 awards were made nationwide. The city of Sioux City received the highest amount of funding possible. Out of the $4,100,000, $3,500,000 must be used to address lead-based paint hazards in homes. The remaining $600,000 must be used for healthy homes interventions. And I think this covers, what, a four-year period?
Yep, about four years, three and a half.
About four, four and a half years.
Yep.
I mean, that's fantastic for Sioux City, and, and they said, um, where did I read it? Just a handful of cities, actually.
Yeah, the other cities, Jill Wandershey, Neighborhood Services Manager, were Birmingham, Long Beach, Chicago, Baltimore, Detroit, Philadelphia.
And this is an extremely important program for Sioux City. It's just, uh, it's just fantastic. In fact, when some of us go out on a chamber trip to DC, we should look these folks up that awarded it and personally thank them, because that's just a ton of money. Can you imagine that? Forty-eight awards nationwide, and Sioux City's one of those. Thank you very much, Jill.
Yeah.
And I just want to mention, um, Ron Engel in our office, he's our day-to-day manager. I don't think he... Oh, he is up here in the back.
Ron?
Um, just wanted to recognize him, because he puts a lot of work into the grant day-to-day and runs the daily operations.
What's the mascot's name?
PB Chippy.
Yeah. We've been to a couple of those.
Yeah.
Does a great job.
Well, and I was just gonna echo, I had the exact same note that Dan had of great work, and I think this is exciting to get this kind of, this kind of funding for it of a program that I think has worked really well for Sioux City, and, I mean, you look at those list of names and to see our community on there, I think that's pretty cool, so, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Good job. Item five, resolution approving a contract and salary schedule with the amalgamated transit union. Item six, resolution awarding a purchase order to Altech for an aerial basket truck. Item seven, actions adopting construction documents. 7A, resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Police Department Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. 7B, resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Riverside Boulevard Storm Sewer Cleaning Project. Item eight, actions relating to agreements and contracts. 8A, resolution approving amendment number four to the site lease agreement with new singular wireless for a communication system at 3430 West 23rd Street. 8B, resolution approving amendment number four to the contract with HR Green for the Riverfront Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Cleaning and Televising Project. 8C, resolution approving change order number seven to the contract with InfraTrak for the Riverfront Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Cleaning and Televising Project. 8D, resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement creating the Regional Institute for Preparedness Agency. 8E, resolution approving amendment number one to the targeted jobs withholding tax credit program withholding agreement with the IEDA and Superior Industrial Mechanical. 8F, resolution approving a contract to Knife River for the Annual Resurfacing Project Phase One. 8G, resolution approving a contract to Knife River for the Annual Resurfacing Project Phase Two.
I, Dave, I, I think I have the answer, so I don't even know if you need to come up, but what I was just wanting to make sure is, as far as the disincentives or the number of workdays, we're confident that we're keeping a pretty tight schedule with this?
Yes, we have, uh, got, got that under hand from the 2017 project, yeah.
Okay. I just, cause I, I would voice that I just have concerns, and I know there have been a couple snares in other jobs that we've had them do. I'm, I'm excited that they're local and gonna be doing this project, but I want to make sure that they're doing it in a timely manner and making, getting done.
They did well on the 2018, what, project, so I'm glad, or, um, Lincoln Way.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Item nine, actions authorizing the issuance of checks. 9A, resolution authorizing payment to Steve Harris for the Bridgeport West Improvements Project. 9B, resolution approving settlement of a worker's compensation claim. Item 10, actions relating to property. 10A, resolution proposing to sell property at Ruston Street, abutting 1314 Irene Street. Petitioner, Lacy Zidillo. 10B, resolution proposing to sell property at 2805 West Fourth Street. Petitioner, KNS LLC. Item 10C, resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and announcing the intent to accept the proposal of the Sioux Land Expo Center property in the 700 block of South Lafayette Street. Item 11, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. 11A, motion appointing Michael Johnson to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, waiving the policy that members must be resident electors of Sioux City. That can all be included, Nicole, in the consent? We don't need to waive a, waive a separate vote?
Haven't enough.
Okay, thank you. 11B, motion appointing Kathy Flinginger to the Kosovo Sister City Committee. And item 11C, motion appointing Robert Stewart to the Human Rights Commission. Item 12, applications for beer liquor licenses. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. Item 13, receipt of minutes. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. This ends our consent agenda. Is there anyone to be heard on any of those items? No one being heard, we're ready to vote. Are we doing this?
Are we voting electronically, or no?
Yes.
We are.
Oh, good.
Consent. Agenda passes four to zero. Mayor Scott is absent. Hearings, item 14, hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the South Alice Street and Linden Way Project. I'll move the item. Second. Any questions, anyone to be heard? Item 14 passes. Oh, I jumped the gun, didn't I? I'm anticipating a four-zero vote. Item 14 passes. Item 15, hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the Cheyenne Boulevard Water Main Repair Project. I'll move that item. Second. Anyone to be heard on that item? Okay. That item passes four, zero. Item 16, hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Mid-American for the granting of an electric transmission line easement in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that item. Second.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. This is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Mid-American Energy Company for a electrical transmission easement adjacent to the Sioux City Wastewater Treatment Plant. The cost of the easement is $67,000, which goes towards the removal and replacement of trees along the fence line along the wastewater treatment plant.
And what did we do last time this was on?
Uh, that was just the proposal, this is the hearing.
Okay.
So, the first step, this is the second and final step.
Gotcha.
Any questions for Hanson? Anyone to be heard? One being heard, we'll vote. Uh, item 16 passes four, zero. Item 17, hearing and resolution approving the proposal to sell property at 3299 Parkview Boulevard and authorizing a development agreement, petitioner Habitat for Humanity. I'll move the item. Second. No, that's...
Amy Kearns, Neighborhood Services Project Coordinator, and I was just, wanted to say that we are excited to once again hopefully be partnering with Habitat for Humanity, and Katie Roberts, the Director of Habitat for Humanity, is here if anybody has any additional questions, but we'll basically be partnering on yet another single-family home in, um, on Parkview Boulevard. We're combining two lots together. Um, another lot is privately owned, and Katie's working on acquiring that lot, and then this lot combined with that one will make for a nice residential development, so...
Excellent. What a great service to the community.
Yeah, it's good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions? No. Anyone to be heard on item 17? No one? Okay. Item 17 passes four, zero. Ordances, item 18, ordinance amending Chapter 2.04 of the Municipal Code to provide a new salary for the mayor and city council members. First consideration passed March 4, 2019. Second consideration passed March 11, 2019. I actually think we should, if we can, with this ordinance, defer it one week until the mayor...
I agree.
...return.
I agree.
Cause otherwise we'll end up, if it's been like the past votes...
Yep. I was just gonna suggest that as well, that he might have...
Is that, we can defer that one week to March 28, or March 25, 2019? I'll move that we defer the item till March 25, 2019? Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Item 19, ordinance amending Chapter 5.20 of the Municipal Code by deleting the senior and disability discount for solid waste collection. Is there anyone to be heard on item 19? I will say this, um, all materials that we've had presented to us, and Ann Brodersen is here from the Seniors Advisory Committee, and thank you for being here today, Ann. Um, all the materials that the city attorney's office has presented to us, uh, really leaves us with no choice but to delete the, the senior discount, but I will say, Ann Brodersen, on behalf of the Seniors Advisory Committee, submitted a memo of which I made sure all of you had copies, um, as well as a three-page argument why we should, uh, keep the discount. And, and I want to tell you, you did a great job on that memo. It gave me some pause about whether we could proceed to continue to have the senior discount for garbage collection, that we could do that in good faith, that it would, that it, that it isn't discriminatory, but, um, in further discussions with the city attorney's office, um, I think anything we do do, or any, if, if we change the, the, um, if we change it from a senior discount to something that is nondiscriminatory, clearly nondiscriminatory, and we go by size of containers, for example, it's gonna require an amendment to the contract. Contract's up in another year, so we're thinking of actually taking your memo, the good information you provided the council and the mayor, and discuss that with the next contract that we enter into, because...
I appreciate that.
We need to do something.
No, I barraged everybody with information, uh, but, you know, we're just trying to get a win-win for all the citizens in Sioux City. I mean, 4,200 people, that's a lot of people.
Yeah.
You know, the, the other thing, too, is when the next contract comes up, chances are we might bid it out, so there's no sense in going to all this trouble without, uh, checking that out first, so...
Well, and let me, let me say this, as, as a lawyer, your memo helped a great deal, because, uh, at first I was critical, how could we let this happen for as many years as we did? It was mid-'80s, I think? 1983. But, you know, I, I think the city acted in good faith. I think we had...
Right.
...a good program. It wasn't, um, excessive. The discount wasn't excessive, $4.50, which I think is probably, I don't know if it's $4.50 since 1983, but it's not excessive. Those that come into senior status eventually, they're all, they're all, it's, it's available to all seniors, not to just certain seniors, so you really gave me cause to pause and think, well, maybe, maybe what we were doing was not, was not as bad as I first thought at first blush, because when you have an attorney general's opinion, you've got the state auditor's opinion, you're thinking, oh, my goodness, how, how did we not do this? But I think we were justified in doing it over the years that we did have it, but now that it's brought to our attention, now that we've had some really good research and good discussion, I think the time's come that we really need to, to act on it. And I, and we know, we're very well aware, and Rhonda said it before, it's very unpopular, but it's something that we, that we really are obligated to do, it's because it's the rule of law.
Right, you don't have a choice at this point, I understand that, but I do appreciate everybody taking the time to look at the information, and most of you have responded to me, and I really appreciate that. And we'll be having our Seniors Advisory Committee tomorrow again. Uh, we'll be discussing this, but I, I want you to know that we're not gonna let this go. I mean, we'll be back next year when you're ready to renegotiate, because I really think that having three different sizes would really make a huge difference to people.
Yes.
I mean, I'm in that category, I only put out, like, one kitchen bag full of garbage a week. I don't need that great big receptacle, I have to struggle with it if it's in the rain or in the snow.
Right.
And I am old enough to be struggling, so...
And this, and, and your committee's survey has reflected, because the other thing that came out of this discussion is a lot of seniors did not even know that we had the discount available.
Correct. I mean, if we took a look at the 15% of the city population that is in that senior category, you could've had 12,000 people getting a discount, not just 4,000, so...
And I'm talking about all kinds of discounts, because I...
Right.
I actually learned about a couple of discounts from the Seniors Advisory Committee when it was formed last year, so thank you very much.
I haven't had a chance, Ann, to read this, but I appreciate the information. I did talk to Lisa Cam, uh, Lisa.
Right, I got your response.
I did get a chance to talk to Melissa Campbell, and she, she, she herself really thinks the three, uh, uh, different carts is really a good way to go, and the, the only question is, as Dan pointed out, it would require us to renegotiate. I don't even know where Leonard is on that. I mean, we can always ask. Worst he can do is tell us no.
That's right.
Uh, and she, and Melissa said she'd be willing to do that, but, um, I think that, uh, Melissa is looking for other ideas as well, so I'll make sure she gets a copy of this as well, and, and I'm, and I'm pretty sure it should be a spec next year when they... And that's the other thing, I think with the city, my understanding is they're gonna try to put the specs together and bid the contract this fall yet, so we'll have plenty of time leading in, and we'll know what's, where we're at.
Okay.
And, uh, but, you know, if council is willing, if you think it's a good idea, I'd be happy to talk to Melissa and, and, and have her touch base with Leonard. Uh, he, he may be willing to, and he may not, and I certainly understand...
You mean before the contract is...
Before, yeah, because you still have, you have until July 1 or June 30 of 2020, so we've still got 15 months to go.
Well, the thing is, I think, I think it's...
I don't know if you adjust rates or not, but, yeah.
Well, the...
I don't think we're running out of time, because it's, it's gonna cost them also to get different...
Yeah, there's gonna be a capital cost of obtaining different-sized carts.
Yes, and then my understanding is, the reduction, we're still, are we, is the city capturing the difference that they're losing off of the seniors?
No.
No, not anywhere else?
We, no.
Okay. And, and, um, I think, um, the, one of the problems is, for Leonard, even with the three carts, I will tell you this, I believe, and Melissa and I had this conversation, is that he's, even though we do it every other week, and that was one of the other things, an alternative option to do it twice monthly instead of weekly, is they still go down every street and have to go and pick up, and it's gonna be, you know, a challenge, I suspect, but...
I'll move...
But I appreciate your, your involvement.
We'll keep at it.
First reading. We didn't have a motion, I'm sorry. I moved first reading, I need a second.
A second.
Thanks, Rhonda. Now, any, any further discussion? I don't mean to cut you off.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to thank everybody for at least taking it into consideration, and like I said, we will keep pursuing this and keep after it, okay?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else to be heard on item 19? Okay. Ready to vote?
There you go.
Thank you. For first reading, on item 19, passes four, zero. Any objections to waiving the rules, doing second and third?
No.
I'll move that we waive that rule.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Motion for a second and third reading?
Second. Or I'll move?
You move, Alex moved, second, third reading. Rhonda seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Second and third readings, on item 19, pass four, zero. Thank you. A citizen concerned? Any citizens with concerns you'd like to voice before the council?
You know, before we go any farther, I think we have some Boy Scouts out there.
Do we?
I think so, yes.
Could you please come up to the podium and introduce yourselves by name? Tell us what troop you're with?
Why don't you all come up?
Yeah, all, all of you come up and please enter. Thanks, Rhonda.
My name's Wayland Smith.
Welcome to the council meeting. Glad you're here.
What, what troop?
Yeah, what troop?
Uh, 28.
Which is...
Where's that at? Where?
North Sioux.
North Sioux.
Awesome.
Welcome. Next.
My name is DeAndre Neary, and I'm a troop 28.
Excellent, welcome.
You gonna play for the Bandits someday?
No.
You're wearing the sweatshirt, man, I figured.
He's shooting a fire.
Oh, there you go, there you go.
Good for you.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Mason.
Mason.
Hi, Mason.
Welcome to our city council meeting.
Thanks for coming.
And your leader is?
I'm Phil Neri, one of the Scoutmasters.
Excellent.
And they're working on their communications merit badge, so they have to go to a meeting, and if you'll give us a little time when you're done, so you could explain the, what you were doing with the senior citizen thing.
Oh, we sure will.
It's, it's a little above there.
And, and you know what? We're getting done early enough, we'll have them come up and take pictures with us, too.
Okay, thank you.
We like, we like doing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Rhonda. Thanks, Rhonda.
Sure. Thanks to the boys for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Any other citizen concerns? Council concerns, Mr. Gretkin?
A couple of quick things, I wanted to thank all of the emergency management personnel for their efforts, and the city manager, and all the city employees for, of the, keeping the public well informed, and for all the hard work over the weekend trying to keep up with Mother Nature's wrath, I guess, on that, on the floods, so it's, it's probably not over, it looks or sounds like, but, but we're trying to do everything we can, and it's really, through the efforts of city and county employees that really have helped make it as, um, best it could be considering the circumstances. So I, I wanted to get in a thank you. I also wanted to thank, uh, everybody involved in the NAIA tournament, from what I saw, even through the semis and the finals, Monday and Tuesday, pretty good turnout. GPAC had, was represented really well again and brought in a lot of people, and, and a special thanks to Corey Westra and Mike Skaggs for their efforts, and, and all that Spectra did down there to, to make the event a good one, to include their, uh, menu, it was pretty good, and I'm happy that that turned out well and looking forward to it next year already. I mentioned, uh, to the city manager this afternoon already, but I, I was out looking and went up on the bluff up above on the south side of town here to take a look and, at the river over the weekend, and there's a red tag house that's placard up there, one twenty-one bluff, and it, it looks like it's a result of a fire, and, and I was just asking for a status check to see what the, I saw some kids kinda milling around, and I'd hate to see anybody get in the house and, and have any problems. And then I also, I noticed it was, it was in the editorial paper yesterday, but I saw it over the weekend, Hamilton Boulevard, between Stone Park and Thirty-Sixth Street on the west side of the street, there are some dirt slides that have come down, blocking the sidewalk, three or four different spots, um, and, and part of branches from trees on the hill, and, and that probably needs to be cleaned up when they're able to get to it. You know, I, again, I know, uh, I think, is that Parks and Rec's responsibility? Or is that, I think that's what.
You're looking, you're researching that.
Yeah, we're researching, the issue is, it's just, it's public right-of-way, but it usually, public right-of-way ties to the property it's attached to as far as maintenance.
Yes.
That's a little bit different, because the property owners' homes are well away from the street.
Yes.
But we, we're researching that and we'll discuss it with Parks and with Public Works.
But it, it kinda looks like it could continue to do what it's been doing, so, I don't know, something needs to be looked at there. And I think that's about it.
Any birthdays coming up?
Not for me, but for my wife.
Tell her happy birthday.
She'd probably be a little upset if I told you her age, but.
Don't do that, tell her happy birthday.
Happy birthday to.
Thirty-five and holding.
Yeah, you.
She's forty-one, I just wanted to tell everybody that.
Well, uh.
We love her too, Donna's a good, good girl.
If it weren't for her, I'd be in real trouble, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gretkin.
But thank you for mentioning that, I think that's it.
Um, I'm gonna add to what he's, um, about the, the riverfront, and I, I drove down
there the other day, and, and when the flooding was first start, starting, and I, I'll tell you what, it, it got quick, it was quick, and Kelly Bach was down there doing a great job and directing traffic, and there was a lot of sightseers that they get through, and I, I found out real quick, you get through, you gotta get right back out, so, I'm sure Ed Pickens and his, and his guys did a great job too. Uh, you know, I think the city comes together when, when we come into disasters like this, and, and we really have to appreciate the good people we have, and, and the good directors we have, the good, um, uh, just our good neighbors, so with that said, I think that's, they did very, very good. Um, on another note, we're talking about NAIA, congratulations Mayor Bob Scott, he finally won a national championship with the Concordia, he sponsored, he's been sponsoring that team for eight, yeah, a long time, eight or nine years at least, I think, so he won, and very excited, and we're congratulating him, so.
Thank you. Rhonda?
Um, I just have a few things that are coming up, let's see.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
Right? So, um, what I would say, tomorrow evening, there's actually gonna be the Stop and Sip, it's downtown in the Ho-Chunk Center, where you can actually see the different businesses that are open, they have an open house, give you some free appetizers as well as samples. One that I'm looking forward to, some of the artists from the Benson Building have moved into the, the Ho-Chunk Center, so they're one of the stops there, that's tomorrow from five PM to seven PM at the Ho-Chunk Center. At seven PM, in the council chambers here, there's gonna be a Leeds Trail, a public meeting, talking about the extension of the Leeds Trail, so if you have any interest in that, make sure to stop up. And then, oh, then, one more thing, I would say, Sioux City Go also has a meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, it's gonna be at Bodega at five PM, it's called a Go Third Thursday, it's just a chance for young professionals to get together, meet each other in a non-threatening environment, just come there, hang out, get to know one another. Uh, we've been having a lot of new, young people from different companies and everything come into these events and stuff, so it's nice to see them getting engaged. So I would just encourage you, if you're new to the area or looking to get involved and make a difference with a young professional organization, see ya at Bodega, Thursday, five PM. Otherwise, no, everything's kinda been said, right? I think that our crews are doing an incredible job and insurmountable task, I mean, I think we put a lot, Mother Nature has put a lot before them, and I think they're rising to the occasion, so I think that's pretty incredible. And then Concordia as well, it was a fun game to watch, and I was excited about it.
Can I mention one thing too, not only about the women's basketball tournament, but the men's basketball tournament, which was held at the same time, Division Two in Sioux Falls, and both Morningside and Broward Cliff Universities made the Elite Eight, they got to the top eight teams, uh, in, in the twenty nineteen national tournament, it's, unfortunately, they did not make it to the semifinals, the top four, but they had a great run in the tournament, and there's a lot of really good basketball that happens in Sioux City between the men and women, and, and hopefully next year will even be more exciting. I know Morningside bringing everybody back, so it'll be, it'll be a challenge.
Yup.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Waters. I just have a couple of things, I too wanna thank the citizens for all the pulling together and teamwork we did for the flood situation, it was just really above and beyond, and Sioux Cityans continue to do that, and in that regard, I feel like I owe a little bit of an explanation to our citizens, and the mayor's not here to hear this, but on behalf of the mayor in particular, but in city council, you may have all seen an article in the Sioux City Journal Sunday on the mega site, and also the Sioux City Journal's opinion, and I just want everyone to know in the community that we have continually been working hard to put a mega site together, it is a priority of city council, but it takes, that's a team effort as well, there are a lot of players that come into play, there's a lot of state law that comes into play, and I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to the city manager, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna prepare, um, an article or a paper for citizens to know all that the city of Sioux City has been doing toward the work of the mega site. I just didn't want anybody, have anybody have the impression that we weren't doing anything, or, uh, worse yet, that we didn't care, because we do care about a mega site, we know the benefits of it, and that's about all I really need to say about it, other than there'll, there'll be more to come, but there are a lot of players that enter into that, so, um, we'll be, we'll be addressing some of those issues.
And I, I wanna add to that a little bit, when I first got, got elected back seven years ago, the mega site was a very big deal, and I remember having a meeting, um, at the county with John Fitch at the time, and Debbie Durham was at that meeting, and she explained a lot, she explained the whole thing to us, that we, you just, like you said, there's a lot of players in this, and, and everybody's gotta get on the same page, and, and I think at this point, I think maybe we need someone to take, take the reins and, and go with it, so, um, maybe we got too many, you know, we need a director, that's what I'm saying, so, I'm not sure that that's in play yet.
But, but keep in mind how complicated property acquisition can, can be.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Okay, and.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just, I just wanted to point that out, cause I, the citizens are concerned about what we do, and we're concerned about what they do, and we stand to benefit for each other, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything?
I'll just add to the thanks to city staff that worked the last almost week on flood preparations and then cleaning up after the flood. We activated the EOC last Wednesday, and for the most part was staff with city employees throughout the weekend, and just wanna let them know the appreciation we have for what they've done, as well as those out in the streets, Kelly Bach, he was here, he's left, I think he spent most of the weekend on the riverfront monitoring what was going on, and I appreciate all that he did.
Thank you. Nicole, the boys, anything? Okay, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Picture time.
Line up, guys.
And if you got your uniform on under there, take your jacket off, so we can have that.